I'm ready to go when you are.
Want to call the roll, please?
Sure. Mr. Basil Preset, Mrs. Bites?
Here.
Mr. Doty?
Here.
Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
Mr. Rathgad?
Here.
Mr. Speed?
Here.
Mr. Dowsky?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Mr. Martino?
Here.
Under announcements, there are several. There will be a special voting meeting immediately following the committee of the whole meeting. Following the special voting meeting, there will be an executive session to discuss upcoming negotiations and personnel matters. Under agenda edits, I've moved the Item 14A and B, which are approvals, to the voting meeting. Since we'll be voting on other stuff, we'll vote on everything at once. And Item 8B, the August budget transfers, there's a second attachment, so there's Attachment 1 and Attachment 2. Are there any other agenda edits? Seeing none, I'll move on. We have a slight change in public comment on how the time's going to be controlled, and I will turn that over to Mr. Wolf, who developed this device, to explain it to the board and the public.
Well, this kind of, you're throwing this around in policy. I had talked about how to make equal access at the meeting, so you would have a way to measure the two, three minutes of the time period that the public has to speak, so one person is receiving additional time, keeps the meeting going. So, I kind of came up with this on my own. It's a pretty straightforward device with red, green, and yellow. The presenter begins to speak, you need to press the start button, and it'll stay green for two minutes. After two minutes, it'll turn to yellow, and then after the third minute, and when they get to the third minute, it'll turn red. At that point, the president will know that the presenter has reached their maximum allowed time for our policy, which, this is the whole point of, if you're going to have a policy, you should enforce it. But that's really all it is, and this is things that I had salvaged off of various things from my past lives. It's my little project to work on. It's a donation to the school district if you choose to utilize it.
As sure everyone knows, Mr. Wolf built this himself. This is not something off the shelf. One question, so if your time starts when you hit the button and it let go green, so the board would probably be better served than the public by not interrupting or asking questions until they've had their full three minutes, because their time's going to run out according to the machine.
That's part of the discussion, I think, that the board would have to have, how you would implement this and use it. There's no pause capability. It starts counting from the time you press start. So, I don't know how, again, that's how the board would like to utilize it, if they would utilize it. And I said it in the policy, to members of the policy committee, I'm not going to be hurt if you don't want to use it, that's fine. It was just an idea, and I'm sure I could find a buyer for it somewhere.
Any comments or questions from the board?
It's all, just so, for those of you, I made a video on YouTube, posted it there, how it worked. If you have a presenter who speaks, like right now, it turned yellow, but this is the two-minute mark, if the presenter's finished, you start again, and it's a fresh three minutes, no matter where in the cycle it is, you just press start, you're starting over. Pretty straightforward.
Is there a buzzer?
There is a buzzer, but I couldn't mute it, it was so obnoxiously loud. I couldn't attenuate it, so I chose nothing. I think I will put something underneath here to bring it up a little bit, so whoever's sitting in front of it actually be able to see it from these seats a pretty well.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, I think, you know, it's always been a source of conflict and angst between the board and the public, you know, in terms of, you know, having, following the policy and giving people an opportunity to voice their opinion. And a lot of times, it's the board president who takes the brunt of that public frustration, I suppose. And really, all we're trying to do is enforce the policies we have in place. If you have a mechanical device that makes it easier for everybody to understand what's going on and how much time they have left, I think it works out great. In terms of, you know, a pause button, or allowing people, you know, the Q and A that goes back and forth, I think, you know, we wrestle with that now, so I think it just comes down to the board president having some discretion to say, you know, this discussion's at an end, time to move on, as opposed to hitting a pause button or anything like that in between. I think that just complicates things. So, if somebody's got two minutes to say what they want to say, the board wants to engage them afterwards in a Q and A, maybe the board president just says, hey, look, we're going to spend another two minutes, you know, asking questions, and after that's over, we'll talk about whether we're going to extend it again. You know, if the board feels like they still need more information, or they want to continue the discussion, that's up to the board members.
Yeah, and I think that's better, that if we let the person state their piece, that way, they're getting their time, and then it's up to us how much we talk.
I like it, I appreciate your leadership on this. I'd like to remind the public that extended discussions, topics for extended discussions can be submitted for agenda items, correct?
Yep. Any comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf, and it sounds like it has unanimous consent. Any public comment on this device or other items I mentioned so far? Seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. Just to review some of our summer activities that took place so far this year and are in completion. In June, we had Camp Invention. July, we had our Extended School Year program for our special needs students, Young Writers' Readers' Workshop. We had a theater camp, band camp. All of these programs were well-attended and quite successful, and children all seemed to enjoy each of these opportunities. So, those were some of the things that happened throughout the summer. We are preparing for the 2014-15 school year. Buildings are on schedule with regards to cleaning. The boilers are in place at Birdsboro Elementary Center. The piping is getting put into place. And I know that they are putting water into the system to bring it up to pressure, so we should be online and right on time with where we expect it to be. Just so everyone knows, that our board meetings have been set for this location for the remainder of, or for the 2014-15 school year. We will have all of our meetings here, and thanks to Mr. Matts, we will have a very good sound system in place so that all can hear. And other than that, we're, you know, waiting for another school year to begin. So, that's my report right now.
Two more items.
Oh, there are two more items. River Rock enrollment. Currently, River Rock has 23 students enrolled for their program, nine of which are Daniel Boone students, and they have three pending. So, those were the numbers that I had as of today.
What were those numbers again?
Twenty-three students are enrolled and ready to start with the start of their program. And there are three that are pending. And as the enrollment, I'll ask for monthly enrollment from them, so that I can bring that to each board meeting.
But of the 23, nine are now?
Of 23, nine of them are Daniel Boone students right now. Okay?
And six are free?
Three, yes. The reserve study update, today was the kickoff meeting. That took place, Mr. Smith and Mr. Small, Lauren, Small were part of that meeting. The engineers were on-site and began touring the buildings today, and they will be in our district throughout the rest of the week. They should be completed by the end of the week, and then I believe Lauren said that they would have a report to us in three to-
Five weeks.
Five weeks. Okay. So, that has started today. That's all I have now.
The only thing I would say, you know, if we could stay on them, but get that report to us before Mr. Smith departs?
Yeah.
That way, he has an opportunity to review it as well, because that'll be a rough draft, and then he'll be more wanting to read that further. So, anything they missed, it could probably help us identify.
All right.
Yeah, he has a little over five weeks before he leaves, I believe, so if we could get it sometime during the fourth week, at least he'd have a week to look at it.
We will follow up on that. No problem.
Is there any public comment on Mrs. Torscha's report? Seeing none, we'll move on to curriculum and instruction. Do we have a CNI meeting scheduled, Mr. Kurtz?
We do. Tomorrow night at 6:00 P.M.
No, Wednesday.
Wednesday, I'm sorry. Wednesday at 6:00 P.M. here at the district offices, we'll have CNI, public reports forthcoming.
Public comment on curriculum and instruction? Board comment, questions on curriculum and instruction? You haven't sent out the agenda yet, have you?
No.
Okay. Building and grounds, like, Mr. Dowsky, I understand we do have a facilities meeting set up?
It is not going to advertise yet, I just heard back from the news day that it looks like we'll be able to have one at 6:00, or the regular building.
Okay. So, 8:25.
Comments or questions from the board? Public comments or questions? Finance, course approvals and approving budget transfers for 2014. How about your question?
The only thing I was going to add was, we're trying to get a finance committee meeting in before the end of August. I'm just trying to work on my end-of-month schedule, and see what we can do. And then I'll see what my availability is, and pass that around via email with the other board members, so we could try to get, I'd like to try to do an autonomy on the, start on top of the 2014, 2013, 14 budgets, we just got to see where we're off, where we're on, and then we start the line thing up for the next year.
For the public's sake, and I know sometimes, as we speak, and I'm purposely trying to talk loud, but we are in the process of trying to obtain a sound system for it here, so future meetings should be better served like that. Are there any board comments or questions about finance? Public comment on anything with the finance, the course approvals, or budget transfers? Seeing none, we'll move on to personnel. All the personnel items have been moved to the special voting agenda, so that will take place at the next meeting. Under programs, Mrs. Torscha, do monthly enrollment, please?
Well, we have our summer enrollment update, that's part of the attachments, and we have projected enrollment at being 3,537 students, which is down from our last day in, June 14th, in the 2012, or 13, 14 school year, of 3,598. This will vary a little bit, because our kindergarten registration is by far not finalized. I'm sure we'll see a few more students enrolling for kindergarten, and we typically see enrollment into the school all the way up until the start of the school year. So, right now, this is what, you know, we're sitting at. There are approximately 200 students registered for kindergarten, 240 for, am I looking up the right numbers? 240 for first grade, 250 for second, 265 for third, 252 for fourth grade, 287 for fifth grade. We did see a jump in ninth grade from 294 from the 14th of June to 319 right now. Also, a jump in 10th grade, bit of a decline in 11th, and then a jump for our 12th grade. So, they're bouncing around right now.
When do you think we would, this is a question I ask every August, when do you think we'd have a better handle on these numbers and adjust our staffing?
I'd have, yeah. Last year, we had kindergarten numbers peak right before school started, and we had to scramble to get an additional classroom, and, actually, two additional classrooms, one at Monocacy and one at Birdsboro. So, I'm thinking at this point, we're sitting with the numbers that we need in our classrooms. Our class sizes are 21 to 23 at the elementary level. Wouldn't really look at reducing anyone anywhere, especially, you know, I wouldn't recommend it at all at any point.
You guys are getting us like a, at a class size?
Yeah, we can, we can do that. I can, we can get that out to you before the end of the week.
Yeah, because I'm just, every year, we have to ask the question, you know, should we be scaling back on a teacher here or there early on, as opposed to hiring somebody and then finding out in October we don't need them anymore? And usually, that call is made too late. It's easier to call somebody in as opposed to letting somebody go.
No, I agree. And at this point, based upon what I've been observing, I would have made a recommendation to the board if there was, if I could reduce a teacher, if we wouldn't need one, and I'm not seeing that.
Mrs. Torscha, I'm not familiar with this, this is my first cycle. Is it typical for the high school to be up 70 and two months ago?
I'm not really sure what's driving that right now, Carol, so I apologize. I'll have to look and see what, why, or is that-
I'm wondering if we're being impacted by what's happening down at the border?
Oh, I don't think, that I don't know.
That's just our numbers.
My expression was, this was the bubble that we had.
But what, as of June 14th, we're up about 70 students. A perplexed effect.
This is after rollover, so these numbers just roll over to the next grade.
Right, right.
You're really actually dumping down.
Am I reading this right, by the way?
Yeah.
First time I'll look at this from.
I'm sorry, so if you look at-
So, if I look at the 321-
Right, to the 319.
That carries over.
Correct. If you look-
So, that class size is still roughly 70.
Right. I misrepresented when I was talking about my numbers. If you look at eighth grade for June 14th, Carol, and then you look at ninth grade, they went from 321 to 319. That's a rollover, yeah. That was my mistake in comparing, so there's not that big of a bump. No.
That's why we put it down.
Just a couple of numbers here and there. Yeah. That was my mistake, I'm sorry.
And back to Mr. Basil's question, I had discussed this with Mrs. Torscha, and if the numbers hold right now, we have absorbed a half-day of kindergarten?
We have absorbed, we have a half-day kindergarten that we're not going to have to put into place, correct?
If the numbers hold as they are now?
Right, right. We won't have to add that additional.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
We are, we're down a half-day of kindergarten at Amity Elementary Center. We don't have that population of students. That person is the gifted teacher as well, so that person will be just doing their gifted responsibilities between Monocacy and Birdsboro.
I see, so you're saying if the numbers go-
If they would go back up, then I would have to look at what we would do with regards to that kindergarten position, and making sure that we had someone, which would not have to, I would be able to, I'd have to look at what we have.
Shifting.
Yes. That would be a good word, to shift.
Any other board comment on enrollment?
Sorry about that, misinterpretation of our numbers.
Public comment on enrollment? Seeing none, we'll move on to policy, the policy committee. I understand that meeting is also set, Mr. Dowsky?
Yes, that meeting will be on Wednesday night at 7:00 P.M., so you can follow the curriculum and instruction. Two birds.
Now, before I move on, is it the request of Mrs. Kramer, who has to advertise all this, if the committee chairs could try and give her a list of dates throughout the year, if it's going to be the third Wednesday, or the first Monday, or whatever, you know, she would appreciate that, is that correct, Mrs. Kramer?
Mm-hmm.
Any public comment on policy? Seeing none, we'll move on to transportation. Is there any transportation report? Is there any old business? We're moving right along. Under new business, like I said, I moved A and B to the voting meeting since we have to vote on it, and I figure we'll do that all at once. Item 14C is the procedure to obtain approval for facility use, and let me just move that along real quick. Mr. Small found some discrepancies in how facility use is being requested and approved, and Mrs. Torscha also feels that the procedure is cumbersome. A facility use was just approved, that the process began in May, so it is cumbersome, and there are some discrepancies in how it's done. But now that there's a facilities meeting scheduled-
Ironically, I emailed somebody yesterday about getting assets, so, yes. So, that was actually one of my-
So, Mr. Small is going to defer that whole discussion to the facility committee meeting?
Because I know there's something we talked about in the spring, trying to look at, and then-
So, what, somebody give us a brief synopsis, what does this discrepancy work?
Well, you've got a policy, you've got the criteria guidelines, and even if you try to marry the two, as it moves through the system, there's just any number of issues and ways to handle it. Don't want to elaborate too much here, but it's just a matter of putting in the policy, putting in the form, so that it moves quickly, more quickly. We have one segment that we, the administrative guidelines, where it's supposed to be submitted 30 days in advance, and which should be more than enough time for it to be in the system. But, and also the issue of determining what category variance request would fall into.
Is there, is there a bottleneck issue? Is that, is that what the problem is?
Someone, someone, obviously, if you want, if there's very bad system cover, if there are three months, the system's unfortunately, you've got to find a three-month-
Things are getting lost?
Sometimes, it's just, there's too many people that have to sign it or get involved with it where it doesn't need to, because it starts at the, right, at the building level, and then Michelle Goss has to make sure that the building is available, which is fine, that part is working fine, but then it comes back to the principal to say, okay, are you okay with this being in your building? Then it has to go to buildings and, like, it just, there's too many hands that it's touching. And I think that we need to just have one person that says, okay, this is where it's going, and then get the central office signatures, and then we put out and say, you know, those are the things that we need to discuss, more or less, how it can roll through. We revamped it a little bit with regards to, something came in and had, it was a complete outside person that wanted to utilize it, and it went back and forth between principal not wanting to, didn't really want that entity in there, because it wasn't a real clean experience, and so it just, it sat, there was, that was the first red flag.
I'm just, I mean, because I remember sitting on the facilities committee when we had this, first discussion came up years ago, and I think one of the things we had talked about was, you know, having this form online, right? So, when somebody was filling out the application, everybody who had to sign off on it was queued via email.
Yeah.
And you have, I mean, there's all kinds of software out there now, that, you know, DocuSign, all kinds of different things, where you put something out there, everybody gets what they're, where they're supposed to initially approve, and you can see where the status is of that thing, and who's next in line for approval. And if that person isn't doing it, they start getting alerts, this has to be done by this certain time.
It's never gotten to that level. Yeah, we're still using the-
Paper. Well, I mean, if that's going to be discussed in facilities, I guess, I mean, that would be something I would suggest you guys take a look at, is an online sort of process, that as opposed to too few hands touching it?
Right, right.
You know, maybe it's just a matter of making sure that the hands that are doing what they're supposed to be doing all the time with things.
Getting a nod from our IT guy, he thinks that's a good idea.
Yeah. DocuSign is a great one.
Does it even live there?
For a couple of years, yeah.
So, just want to make sure that we have that cleaned up.
And, Mr. Dowsky, the other thing that Mrs. Torscha and Mr. Small brought to my attention, is I think, and it's going to require them for approval, but a whole list of who pays and who doesn't, it needs to be updated.
That's what, you know, you get through to, yes. And so, I asked to get an updated list of who actually pays versus who doesn't. And is there, is there something in writing somewhere on the whole fields, most of the fields, as like, how that works between the township and the district, is there some sort of a chain?
There's a link.
Yeah, I think there's a, the township certainly has, you know, they own the fields, but we have a maintenance responsibility for them. I mean, that's basically how it works.
I didn't, I-
A middle school has a privacy field.
I have it, Carol. Okay, I'd say, if somebody can send it to me, just so I know what it says.
I have that.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, anybody who wants to reserve the fields has to do it through the-
Township, right.
But typically, we have first dibs, so whatever we want to do with it, it's ours, but if some outside baseball, you know, this is where it came up, was with baseball fields, people coming in and setting aside the fields for tournaments and things like that, and there were complaints, you know, other people didn't get a chance to do it, but that's what the township does.
And is there a fee that goes to the township then?
Huh?
Is there a fee that goes to the-
I don't know what the township charges.
Not typically, unless that's changed, but it's the same thing, as the larger fields go, a lot of times, associations do a lot of the upkeep for that, they add the fields. So, but there has been a call and a pass about, should there be a fee involved?
Okay. I just didn't know there was a fee that the township got, or it was just not, it's not where, but nobody changed it, I guess, I'm pretty sure. Thanks.
The next item under new business was the use of school vans, and Mr. Rathgad's name is listed here, because you first brought this to my attention a couple of weeks ago. I didn't, I'm not sure what you wanted to discuss about it, and then Mr. Small has added that.
Well, I think Mr. Small and Mrs. Torscha are going to cover the bases, but I'll preface my comments in that I'm all for the utilizing and sharing of equipment and material and personnel that makes sense between townships and school board, so I'm, I'm okay with that. But it was about a month ago that I noticed our vans are at the Birdsboro Community Center, and the, we had one of those great thunderstorms, and those middle pop-out windows were open. I'm like, well, that's great, buddy, you know, why were there one of them? So, I sent a quick text to Mrs. Torscha, I said, hey, and we went back and forth a couple of times, because she, I assumed she knew our vans were over there, and apparently she didn't, so I think you could-
So, upon my digging, I found out that two years ago, Doc, previous superintendent had agreed to allow our vans to be leased to the Birdsboro Community Memorial Center, and that they leased them for an eight-week period from June 23rd to August 15th, that's these dates this year. And they're used between 9:30 and 2:00, Monday through Friday. There are specific places that they are driven to. The Birdsboro Community is responsible for maintenance and repair of any damages to the vans during the period of time, responsible for keeping the mileage, and that they are not allowed to exceed 1,500 miles during that time that they are leasing them from us. They are, have their own insurance, and the vans are, the agreement that was set up prior to my appointment was for $1,500, so it was automatically put into place again this year because I didn't know anything about it, and so, moving forward, we will do whatever the board would like to do with regard to the van- with regard to the van usage. And, you know, we can either continue or not. We can, you know, make sure that things are set up more specifically. Um, where we're at.
So the township pays, the insurance provider or something like that?
They have their insurance through the Philadelphia Insurance Company. They have, I, I...
Probably the provider. We do that in the borough whether vehicles are only leased. So, yes, but pride or...
Right.
Does it automatically renew year to year?
Um, it shouldn't, it should not. I was not aware of it. And we will make sure that we bring it to everyone's attention here and have it voted on whether we want to or not moving forward. True.
Was that the only group using it?
That was the only group, yeah. Our two vans, our two nine-passenger vans.
Was that contract drawn up by the school district solicitor? Or was that provided to us by the community center?
That was provided through the solicitor with whatever input he had, is my understanding, so...
Okay. Because my only concern would be an indemnification and liability and those types of things.
That kind of stuff, yeah.
Because it's got our name on the side of the van. Somebody gets in an accident.
Right. I, I don't, again, I, it was...
Yeah, no, I get it. I'm just curious. I mean, I don't, I don't really have an issue with it. I mean, if it's an asset that's not being used and we can lease it and make some money off of it or something, I guess I'm all right with it so long as it's an indemnification and liability issue.
I think that that has to be spelled out better according to, you know, what I see here.
I'm excited for Mr. Basil.
Right.
I'm also curious, is, are the drivers qualified?
Yes, we have a copy of each of the driver's licenses and much like what we do here. Yeah. Anybody that drives our vehicle, we have to have their, have a copy of their driver's license and a, we get a report if they've had any kind of, yeah.
Do you have a CDL for that kind of thing?
No.
I have two questions.
Okay.
It seems Mr. Basil isn't aware of this. As board president, shouldn't he have signed the contract?
Well...
I don't know who signed it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where it, like, again, I think...
Come back to the board. We never even discussed this.
It was, it was something, it was something that was created through our last predecessor who said, go ahead and, you know, did whatever they were told to do.
No, she, she assumed that they're from that school somewhere.
Yeah.
I'm like, no, 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 they're over here.
They did sign it.
Well, right now, because Michelle and is doing it because it's the vans through the athletic department.
But that's not the contract. That's just approval to use them.
Right. So that's more or less the identity.
Oh, we don't have the contract.
I don't have it right here, yeah.
But, no, and my question in that regard though is, any monetary contract should be approved by the board and signed by the president and secretary.
I don't disagree, yes. So...
And the other question is this bit on condition and mileage. Is somebody like charging the vehicles half of them and documenting the condition and mileage?
I would hope, but I don't have that answer. But I will get that answer.
Thank you, Mrs. Torsia, for bringing that to our attention.
I guess that raises the next question, which is, is there some kind of audit that you guys can perform, you know, within the buildings or the administration to determine what's happening and where so that if there's additional things like this out there that the board's not aware of, or that the administration isn't aware of?
It's a process.
Okay. When do you expect that to be completed?
Before the start of school, I, as part of our annual audit, I asked for copies of every agreement, every contract, board to...
Yeah.
Well, this was obviously not...
Right.
And anything else that we come upon, get it on a schedule. This is what you just said. So come another year, it'll be before the board and make it say, hey, wait. I have to say to Mr. Small, he needs to project a little bit more. I'm getting older.
As a result of the annual audit that we started two weeks ago, I have requested copies of everything that the board had done. Then anything that we're aware of that is going on, such as this, where is it? Great, thank you.
I was up at the district offices today. And Mr. Small has just recently received the title for each vehicle that we have insured. And we found the vehicle correct that we don't have insured.
Or licensed.
Or licensed.
How's it registered? I was going to say that you have to have insurance on a vehicle to be registered.
It's a little bit lewd, it's a property. It's just going to run around the high school. Apparently restoring someone else's vehicle.
The point is, is that they are conducting and auditing pretty much everything.
Yeah. Yeah. For little by little.
Can't have, can't have sidebars. No sidebars.
Any other comments or questions about the use of school vans by other agents? Saying none? We'll move on to the fifteen, sixteen budget planning. And let me preface this by saying, I am not intending to cast dispersions on anything that's been done in the past. But I've talked to Mrs. Torsia and Mr. Small about the budget planning. Six, six new board members attended training March first and second. And one of the topics they covered was budgetary planning. And they said it's actually the administration's responsibility after discussion with the board. The board to give direction as to what we want in terms of programs and resources and that type of thing. And I don't know if that's been done in the past, but it seems like the previous administration, the past three years, comes out in the fall with this gloom and doom budget. We're eliminating everything and raising taxes to the max. And the board then spends the next six or seven months bringing that back into reality. And I'd like to see us avoid that whole scenario this year if we can. So my thought is, is Mr. Basil said you're looking to have a finance committee by the end of August. Then if Mrs. Torsia and Mr. Small could make yourselves available for that meeting, I'd like to see the board members submit to Mr. Basil your ideas on what taxes need to be raised, if any, what programs need to be adjusted, if any. So that Mr. Basil can compile that. Have the finance committee look at it all together and pass on to the administration, here's the budget we'd like to see you create.
I think it's a pretty momentous task for individual board members to do. I mean, in terms of like, saying this, these are the programs we want, without any idea as to what resources you have available or costs or capital, giving capital and that type of thing. That's...
Well, we have a five-year plan.
Well, yeah, I get that. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to follow your thought process on this. I mean, typically what we've done in the past was, we start off with an autopsy of the previous years. Where were we off? Where were we on in terms of our assumptions? And how do you control those variances going forward? And what sort of things did we discover the prior year that we need to work on and improve going forward? So every year it's been, you know, improvement on the year before. And then it kind of goes quiet until November or December when they get back, the administration would typically get back to the finance committee with, here's our recommendations for the following year in order to balance the budget. And it's included tax increases, you know, curtailment program, cuts, additional revenue ideas and things of that nature to try to balance the budget. But there was, up until last year, the, well, actually, the last two years, the administration typically come forward to us and just said, well, here's the budget deficit. Now you wrestle with it. And last year and the year before, the board said, okay, balance it before you bring it to us. And then we'll determine going forward how we're going to manage those choices on how you decided to balance the budget. I think part of the problem is now, it's a little bit easier to get your hands around some of the expenses in terms of personnel and stuff like that, which is ninety or sixty-seven percent of the budget right now. But the other stuff is a little bit harder. And certainly on the revenue side, we have no idea going forward what those are going to be. So in the past, I think the default has always been raise taxes to cover whatever it is we're not going to get from the state or what we don't know whether we're going to get it from the state or not.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's going to be perfect by any means. And Mrs. Torsia wasn't in position last year. Mr. Small wasn't in position last year. And the budget that was presented to you in the fall before we were all seated, from the administration, just axed all extracurriculars, all programs, all sports, and raised taxes to the max and said, here's your budget. But did not use fund balance. Right. And that's what I'm saying. I think it could be a little more thought put into it than just straight line and everything and just saying, here it is.
So you're looking for us to help prioritize based on our constituents' input? Don't we want to see best-case scenario preserved in the next budget? Is that what they...
Well, yeah. And let's say if, if you have to raise taxes, do you want to raise to the index? Do you want to include the exceptions? Do you want to go to referendum? I mean, that's, if we have to. If you have to cut programs, which programs? You know, rather than axing everything? So, and again, it's all preliminary, right? This is, this is going to be the fall. We have no idea what the state's going to do.
Seems cork before the apple. Cork before the moistener.
I just don't want to put out this gloom and doom budget that we seem to have done the last couple of years.
Well, I agree with that. Did we also have some discussions, Mrs. Torsia, about kind of building this preliminary of the building level? Did we have a discussion about that in the past for several months about that?
I think by recollection, we've always built this up at the building level. And our budgets are always built up from building level up to the administration. So the administration goes talks to principals. You know, everybody looks at the last year's budgets, where they spent their money. And that's part of the autopsy, right? Where we spent the money, where we didn't. And then it comes up to the board level. Look, this is, this is what we anticipate our expenses to be going into next year. And then we're always left with the tough question. If we anticipate our revenues to be here and our expenses to be here, how do you, how do you cover that gap? Yeah. And so it's been taxes. Taxes have been the first thing that we put into the gap with the reserves set on the side because it's almost at the default. How much reserves are you going to spend? And that's a discussion that the board always has every year. And so the question then becomes, it's been following six months after that, January through, you know, whatever, March, April, the board then starts making decisions about what things are most important for us that we're going to keep. And therefore, we're going to spend more money on a fund balance to cover that gap. And then in March, we typically get a better idea of what the state's going to give us. And that helps solve that problem going forward. And, you know, it's, it's...
It's definitely a living duck.
Yeah, this, this past year was the first year that each building administrator and administrative person met with the business office and went line by line to say, you know, what are we doing here? What are we doing here? And we did cut out a lot. And we'll continue that process.
Looking to just follow up with what Mr. Speed said, and maybe I'll read into this, but if you look at each principal as a, as a building manager, and, you know, as the person that knows their building best, and you said to that building manager, we need to cut twenty dollars on your budget. Come back to us with what makes the most sense for you instead of us telling them we should cut.
Right.
They should, they should vote.
And a lot of that was done, especially for this year. There's not, there's not a lot of wiggle room in those budgets because we did cut out a lot. But I'm, you know, that will be reexamined again this year to see, you know, do we have something sitting that's not being used? Definitely.
I mean, prior business managers, it was, it would come up from the building level, but there was no pushback from our business manager. It was kind of like, just take the information and then pass it on up to the board. And so the board always had to be the one to push back and ask the questions. And what are your assumptions? And how'd you come to that determination? Let's analyze this line item. What about transportation? And we were the ones who had to push back on all these assumptions that were being made to build the budget. And really, that should be happening at the business manager level. They should have those conversations early on. So by the time it gets to us, this question's already been asked and answered. I'm assuming that the process you guys have to follow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see it.
I'd like to see it. Yeah. I would think as far as like programs, as far as extracurriculars, music, sports, I mean, we can't really pick and choose out of those. I mean, I can't say, well, you know, I don't really think golf is important. So, I mean, it's either all or nothing, I think. It's just other title reminds and all that. We can't, okay.
Right, I would have to agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, all I'm saying is, we're supposed to provide direction to the administration. So if anybody has ideas on programs, taxes, whatever, just give them to Mr. Basil, you know, to compile for this finance committee meeting. Other comments or questions? District fundraising, Mrs. Torsia.
I have been meeting with the various groups that do most of the fundraising in our district. I met with the sports boosters. I met with our PTC, Blazer Foundation, met with Relay for Life. Just this evening, I did meet with the music boosters as well and talking about, you know, what they're doing, how they're generating funds, you know, looking at that whole process. With Relay for Life, it seems that it has blossomed quite a bit. The high school Relay for Life team and processes is in place. That's not changing. What has become a little bit more competitive at the elementary level are the teams that are more or less coming off of the Relay for Life. And in that meeting, we discussed how we can try to possibly work together so that we're not asking our parents to constantly give us money. You know, and then because we're trying to keep money within the district, which is what our PTC and our Blazer Foundation, Sport Boosters, Music Boosters does, how can we work together? And so, you know, we have an ongoing meeting. I have another meeting with our Relay for Life team next week to continue discussion on what we can do to be able to support that program but by not, but trying to keep as much money into, in our district as possible. So that's what we're doing with fundraising.
Comments or questions?
Are we? I guess one of the things, and I don't know the answer to this. I mean, what, how is the Relay for Life team being treated any differently than any other nonprofit fundraising organization? Because that would be my only concern. Look, I'm a big fan of the ACS and supporting Relay for Life. But I guess I just want to be careful. We're not, it could be Relay for Life now, then it's United Way or it's some other, you know, nonprofit with a good cause that the school district sort of gets behind and starts opening doors. And then, I don't know, I mean, do we run down some path that we don't want to go down or is it a slippery slope? Or should we be treating, we've got our fundraisers, our booster organizations that are specifically raising money for the school. And then you've got something separate, which is the community that gets involved in these things, which is great. And we can help by opening up our facility doors and that type of thing to facilitate that. But I don't know, I mean, should we be doing, like, I don't know.
But that's what I'm kind of working through right now to see, you know, how much of our school is being utilized, you know, are we receiving any funding for it? The high school, the high school team is an established team. It's something that's driven by the students. There's a lot of support from the staff. It is a well-supported program. But what's happening is there's more and more teams that are breaking off. And at the elementary level, it's really making it hard for our fundraisers that are coming back into our students for these groups to compete. And I don't think we should be competing so much for those funds. You know, we're not in the business to be fundraising for an outside entity at a grand scale. I think that our participation at the high school level is, you know, we're supporting that. And I think that that's where it could, you know, stay. But with saying that, I'm willing to, you know, continue to have discussion and see how we can all work, you know, together. But yes, there are, you know, buildings that are being used or facilities that are being used that are complimentary, that there's not a fee being charged. And, you know, we might need to look at that because if we're charging our PTC to have meetings or to be using our facilities to be raising monies that's coming back exactly for our students, then we need to make sure that we're doing that across the board.
Absolutely. We have to treat that.
Right. So that's the process that I'm in and evaluating what we've been doing there and how we need to move forward.
Mrs. Torshia, what is the term that Relay for Life is bringing? How long is it? Is it a month thing?
All year. It's all year. It's all year.
It gets kicked off just starting year, school year?
They start fundraising.
And they're just fundraising all through?
Yes.
As soon as the relay is open, they start fundraising again for the next thing. They're doing drives everywhere and...
So I have approved all of the fundraising initiatives that the high school Relay for Life team have done repeatedly. Because again, that's where it started. And the students become very, very involved with it. They become, you know, it's something that they're looking forward to. It's, you know, it's where it started. What I'm trying to go through is what's going on at the elementary level.
Thank you, Mrs. Torshia. The last item on the committee of the whole meeting is the transition house lease. The discussion is this. I was up at the district office. And I was talking to Mr. Small about the reserve study that started today. And we start talking about the different facilities. And I looked in and I said, "Well, are you aware we own a house?" And he thought I was joking. And I wasn't. So I started to explain to him about this house. And he wanted to see the contract because he thought he had all the contracts and leases. And he doesn't. Mrs. Spremer didn't have it. She had to go find it. Thankfully, she knew who to start asking. And we came up with the lease. I don't know that, I know I had no idea what the lease for the transition house was out. I don't know if any of the other newer board members have any idea. So that was this discussion.
What is it?
The transition house is a, there was a house that was built that was adjacent to the high school. And prior to the construction of the stadium, the board decided the house was for sale. They thought it'd be a good idea to buy the house. So they could have, I don't know, more ground, tention to the school.
What's the time period?
Uh, I don't know. It's five years ago.
That's it?
The stadium is about five years old, so around that time.
Yeah, it might be.
So the house was purchased, can't remember what the price was, $200,000 or something like that. I can't remember now what they spent on it, but they bought the house. And then as part of the stadium project, the house was used as, in terms of the calculations for the overall property boundaries for the school. So that when it came to setbacks for parking and detention basins and things like that for stored water and all that kind of stuff, they could use that property outline as part of the overall subdivision. And it enables the district to accomplish this task of putting in the stadium, getting the parking and all that kind of stuff that needed to get the township completed. And then the question was, what do you do with the house now? And it was thought to use it for administrative offices for a little while. And then, is it the Y? They came to us about using that? I'm sorry, DCIU?
Yeah.
Yeah, so one of them came to us about, hey, can we use the house for...
Transition house is what it is.
It's a transition house. It's a program that DCIU runs for students. And so it had to be handicapped accessible and things of that nature. So they pay us, it took $12,000 a year?
I think it's about right, $1,000 a month.
$1,000 a month. So they pay us $12,000 a year to utilize that house.
And what are these for?
For students who have disabilities but may be able to live independently. So it's a home where they learn how to do the laundry, you know, dishes, cleaning, making the bed, just regular life skills. Yes. Right.
And so they could have done it anywhere. They chose to do it here. It seemed like a good fit. We've got somebody in the house. And I believe they take care of some of the maintenance and stuff like that on the inside, don't they? And we're taking care of the outside.
Yeah, I believe that anything that would probably break down, we would, you know, help them with.
It's kind of like a landlord-tenant relationship and they're in there. But we, you know, $12,000 a year, which is enough to kind of be keeping the upkeep on the cost for us updating that asset anyways, since we have it. The alternative is you have to sell the house and, you know, something to buy that off the school. Or sell it in the marketplace and enrich yourself on the asset.
Well, my thought is for the revenue enhancement committee is that I just think it's something that should be looked at. But when Mr. Small got a hold of the lease...
Is that up in the near future?
It's up the end of December every year. If it's not changed, it's automatically renewed.
So it's year to year with a certain amount of time?
Right. But again, it automatically renews. And I don't think the terms have changed for the past five years. I have no idea of the market value of the house. I have no idea what it could or should lease for. But right now, the lease is $1,000 a month. We pay all utilities except for phone. We do all snow removal and lawn care. And we pay 50% of the renovations.
Yeah, the renovations were like very minor at the time. So we had to put, had to build a ramp outside. And I think there was a couple, like a handrail or something else that had to get constructed at the time of the house. There's sort of that ADA requirements. So that was a diminutive cost. I think for the revenue enhancement of facilities, the issue would really be one of, are you going to sell that asset in today's market? Or do you continue to lease it out and make some money off the asset that helps, that covers the cost of holding it?
Yeah. And the fact that it has been five years now and the lease hasn't changed, I just think it needs to be looked at. And again, with so many of the new board members having no idea.
So we'll get a copy of that lease and look at also?
Sure.
Just on that, you talked about earlier demands and other agencies of this contract that was drawn up. That was an automatic, I don't think it was an automatic renewing contract or why. When you talk about transition houses, it's an automatic renewing contract. How many of these contracts are out there in the district? It's subject to, I know the old Channel One contract is automatically renewing. You know, we knew about that. Just how many are there? And do we have a register of what we can change in terms of these contracts? Are we abiding by the terms of these contracts?
That's sort of what Mr. Basil was asking Mr. Small about, just getting a handle on all these various contracts.
Thank you.
Really deep. Thank you.
I thought your work was done, Mr. Small, right? Other board comments or questions? Seeing none? I don't believe I said it earlier, but if there's any public comment, please, when you come to the podium, state your name and address and Mr. Wolf will use his new device. Are there any public comments on anything?
And to sign in.
Oh, your time's up. Sorry.
They're waiting to count.
I just wanted to say that I think you have to be very careful about public perception with fundraising. When you use words like keep as much funds coming back to the school as possible, I think there can certainly be people in the community who would object to cutting fundraising opportunities for something like cancer research so that more community money can stay in the school. I think it's dangerous perception, in my opinion. And I would recommend that you not be changing the policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Torshia.
But we don't change anything. It's a dangerous perception.
Other comments or...
Reset?
See if you can start talking again.
You might count down for me.
Okay. I am team captain for the formerly Amity...
Could you state your name and your address?
I'm sorry, Gagarin Tengra. I'm team captain for an Amity Relay for Life team. And I understand that you're looking at, you're doing some of the fundraising policies. And I think there's a few misconceptions here as far as how Relay for Life actually works. And we'll straighten that out right now. The Relay for Life is made up of an abundance of teams, not the high school team, the elementary team. The high school has multiple teams. The elementary school, out of 100% of the teams in all of the district, are 2%. 2% belong to the elementary level, okay? When you're saying that the high school as one team, they can raise their funds and their funds go, are untouchable, but the elementary school teams are targeted because our funds do not go directly back to the students, that's, what is that saying? I mean, as Amy so eloquently put it, the funds do not belong necessarily. It's like apples and oranges. You don't give cancer research funding to a student who needs a new schoolbook when you're trying to save a life. I mean, it's really that simple. Cancer and fundraising in the elementary centers and in all of the high school and all of Daniel Boone is one thing. Fundraising for student and PTC is completely a different thing. They need to be kept separately. And you know why? The people of this district are smart enough to decide for themselves where their money needs to go. And they give their money to the things that touch them and mean the most to them. And if they don't want to give their money to PTC or Blazer Foundation or any of the other district-based fundraising facilities, they shouldn't have to and they shouldn't be told that they need to.
Let me respond to part of that. And I was not part of the discussion that Mrs. Torshia had with the various groups. But my understanding, two things. One is when she threw out this idea of sharing fundraising, it was just an idea. It's not something that needs to be considered any farther because none of the groups were interested in doing that. So it was just an idea she threw out.
Yeah, it was my idea.
And it seems like because of no one being interested in it, it's a dead issue. What I do think is an issue is my discussions with Mrs. Torshia are that, we keep saying this about other things. This is the Daniel Boone area school district. And I believe Mrs. Torshia wants a school district Relay for Life, not this school versus this school versus that school. I think that's all she's saying. And am I correct or...
What I'm saying is that if we're going to be doing things that are for our students that we shouldn't just target one elementary school, that it should be an opportunity for all elementary schools, for all children to be able to attend. And my understanding is that we have limited access to Birdsboro Monocacy because of capacity issues in this building. But there are other buildings within our district that could support the capacity of all of the students, all of the elementary students, and for all children to be able to participate. But more importantly is that, you know, again, we do so many other fundraisers that are not for the Daniel Boone area school district students. So the money does not come back. Every year, the blood drive, that is not, anything that comes back, that is supporting, you know, an outside agency, supporting the student, you know, that was loved here. And that's a wonderful thing. And we should continue to do that. We do Jump Rope for Heart, which is a fundraiser that goes outside. So we're not, it's not like we're not doing our due diligence to help raise funds for the other entities that are out there. But more importantly, we're not a fundraising institution for everything else. And the concerns that I'm getting from parents is that, and it's a lot of parents, is that we have to choose and there's too many, there's so many choices to be made. So do we send our funds to the PTC? Do we send it to Blazer Foundation? Do we do Relay for Life? There's not enough, you know, to do for everybody. So what I'm saying is we need to work together because we're asking our parents repeatedly to continue to give from their pockets. And it is beneficial if the money does come back into our district to support our students. It is helpful. The PTC works extremely hard, as well as the Blazer Foundation, to continue to bring programs and other supplies and other things to our students. It's a key part of, you know, keeping our, you know, district moving along. So, you know, I'm continuing to have conversation with Relay for Life, but let's continue work. But again, you know, there's a lot of discussion that we need to have.
I think the question really was, I know what others, the Pottstown Relay for Life, when they got started, it was the Pottstown Relay for Life. They did it at the Hill School. And then they moved around and moved to Pottsgrove and some other... So those are just hosting facilities. Those schools were, and they would donate their facility to the cause, right? And it wasn't, so if you were a Daniel Boone student and you wanted to participate, you had your Daniel Boone team, but you went to, you did your fundraising, wherever you did your fundraising. And then you went to the Relay, wherever the Relay was. I mean, I think the only differentiation here is we're hosting. We have students that are participating and families that participate locally, but we're also hosting it. I think the line that we have to be careful of is, as a school district, we have to be careful about not treating other nonprofit causes differently than we do the ACS. ACS is important. So is, you know, so are 100 other nonprofit fundraising events that take place at the school district. So I don't know how, you know, Pottsgrove does it, you know, to differentiate the two. Maybe it needs to be named something else. I don't know. Instead of the Daniel Boone ACS, it's the, I don't know, the Amity, you know, Community ACS.
It's typically the same district, right?
No, I know that. Lots of different groups come in and participate in this particular Relay. And so maybe it's a perception issue that needs to be addressed. And maybe just naming things differently helps create that differentiation. Clearly, we want our kids to participate in these types of events. But I just, as a school district, we need to be able to ensure that we're standing alone. And some other nonprofit fundraiser group does come up and say, hey, you're treating ACS differently than you're treating us. And we want the same access. We want the same resources. We want the same, you know, whatever with the parents. And now we're put in a difficult position. So I think that's the only thing that we're trying to wrestle with. No one's trying to shut down the Relay in any way.
No, but we take issue with the fact that, you know, we're being told that if we want to stay on campus, we have to fundraise with PTC and Blazer Foundation and share our funds.
That was an idea. That was one idea that I put out that, and we were just having discussion. There was nothing written. There's no policy. None of that is done. It was, I was trying to have discussion on how can we work together so that we can all be, you know, have access to it? Right now, the elementary Relay for Life is using our students' Tuesday folders. Tuesday folders are being inundated by the Relay for Life fundraisers. There's no other outside agency that I allow to come into the district to send out their materials or their flyers. And that was a conversation that I had as well.
Mrs. Torshia, it's not inundating. We have three functions. We have fantasy dance, the Monster Mash, and a movie night. And they were all family-oriented functions.
But if I'm on Broad Street for cancer and I send out flyers in the Tuesday folder soliciting donations? Because it's really the same, I ever, but it's really the same.
Everybody does three.
So if she approves it, yes.
Well, and I think what she's saying is that they need to bring a look at that.
Right.
Are some of these functions held in school-owned buildings?
Yes.
At no charge?
Yes.
Well, then again, if I want to do March of Dimes fundraiser, can I have the building on Friday night to do? I mean, for 42 weeks.
I think what Mrs. Torshia is trying to do is make it bigger and better and involve more organizations. For example, the Rotary Club in First County, they put on a casino night. All the Rotary Clubs participate. And if you get back, how much you put in? If you put in, one club puts in more work, they get more the proceeds. So I think the idea was if groups wanted to participate with you guys, then what were they going to contribute? How much were they going to bring in? How much help were they going to support? And then you guys can divide the funds out. I think it needs to be bigger and better. I think that was...
But no, none of the groups liked that idea. And you're not, you're not being told you have to share your funds.
Right. No.
No, you were told it was an idea.
It was a, yeah.
Whoever told you you had to share them was not Mrs. Torshia.
She was right there. It was myself. And I sat there and I said, "Here's an idea." There was nothing in writing. I didn't walk away and say, "This is what we had to do." I was trying to put something out so that we could all work together because we're all trying to saturate our elementary parents with different things. And you may have three, but then Monocacy has a few more. And then, you know, we have different things that are going on. I have a stack of Relay for Life flyers on my desk. So, you know, it may feel like it's three from you, but when they all continue to pile up, it's three, six, nine, 12, 15. And then we're trying to squeeze in some of the other things that are going on that, you know, are trying to bring programs or whatever, you know, back into the building as well.
And if I may, back to Mr. Basil's thing, my understanding is Mrs. Torshia's not trying to cancel Relay for Life or cut out the American Cancer Society. She wants to have one Relay for Life. She wants to have one Relay for Life, not... She wants to have one relay for life, not a competition between several relays for life within her own district.
Right.
I don't understand that.
Well, that was the way it was explained to me at the meeting, is that it's a very competitive, that the relay teams are very competitive, that you're trying to raise the most amount of money for your relay team. If that's not what you're trying to do? Yes.
It's all for the same relay. It's not, it's all for the same, it's for the American Cancer Society. It's not for, it's families.
No, no, no. I understand that, but one team might be competing against another team to be raising funds, correct?
No.
So then, so then if, then...
There's no prize to raise the most money.
And I get that.
I think where she might be going is with, let's say you have 20 teams that are made up of students within the school district. Are all 20 teams going to be utilizing, pick a thing, the Tuesday folder to go to the same audience to get the same dollars? Or is it one flyer that's going out from the ACS to raise funds for the ACS? And so the concern, I think, I don't want the words in anybody's mouth, but maybe is the parents sitting at home and they're getting 20 different fundraising requests, they may not realize it's for the same thing.
You have your own fundraising.
Right. They may not realize it's, hey, all these dollars are going to the ACS, but instead you're running a check to the, I don't know, what you want to call it, the, well, no, but I'm saying though, but the person that's at, I know how it works because I do it, but somebody, you have a group coming to you saying, hey, we're the Glow Worm fundraising team and we're raising money for ACS. Okay, so now I'm running a check out to the ACS, you know, I'm handing it to the Glow Worm team. Then somebody else comes and says, hey, I'm doing, you know, we're the Blazer, you know, team. Okay, well now, and they're asking me for the same money. And then I get another one, and then I get another one, I get another one. We just want to make sure that's what's going on, right? Maybe if it's the Daniel Boone, if that's what's going on, maybe what you want is you want...
I already gave, you know, to a group, but yes, there are all different teams and a lot of fundraising stuff right here.
Right. Well, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Torshia, nothing's been finalized.
Nothing. Now I said there's ongoing discussions. Yeah.
We'll just try to communicate clearly and we'll improve the process, that's all. I mean, I think she's just trying to address certain concerns she's hearing from parents, you know, hey, look, we're getting inundated with this stuff and at the same time, we want to continue to facilitate this activity. So how do we, how do we work together to get that done? I think that's where we're just trying to go with this.
Has there, I know the Blazer Foundation is relatively used. There's not a lot of track record there, but from the PTC that has been around for a long time, has there been a consistent decrease in their, in their amount of fundraising?
I don't think so. I don't believe that there's been a decrease in it. I think that there, each thing that they do has been successful. There's just, I mean, it comes down to do you participate in this, you know, activity that's being done here or do you participate in this one? There's just so many choices that are being given and yes, it ultimately comes down to the parent, but how many activities are we going to support that are being put in front of the parent is what I'm trying to look at.
And the PTC and the foundation are all part of the same discussion.
Right. Yes.
Having those discussions. It's a little off topic, but I'm just curious, when do you get a flyer to be sent in our Tuesday folders? Does the school district pay for copying it or does it come to you and staff and our staff, I guess?
I'm not really sure.
No.
We get one copy and we're going to... Yeah, I'm not sure where the copying is being done. I'm not sure.
We pay for our own copying and we separate them for the, each school by company or an classroom. Then that is given to the teacher, to the, however they put them in their folder, but we do our own copying and separating. So if there's 20 fourth graders or like the paperclip to give to the secretary, that...
Every...
So you incur that cost?
We incur that cost.
The way back?
Every organization does.
All organizations do that for any...
All right. Well, this sounds like this is a sort of segue into maybe revenue or some other committee.
Something.
Yes, instead of discussing at the board level, so push this off into facilities or revenue enhancement or...
Somebody wants to talk.
Yes, Mrs. Conlin.
Yes, Stephanie Conlin. Once a year, we're working up to Route Road. I'm actually up here to speak on behalf of the Blazer Foundation, not as a parent of the district. I just wanted to publicly state that I very much appreciate the discussion about the fundraising. I do think that it's something that we do need to look at. Just today, I was making phone calls to try to finalize some fundraising that I have set up for this year and it has to do with working with different restaurants. And I've called several and three out of the 12 that I called had already been contacted by somebody at Daniel Boone. I don't know what group it is and we certainly don't get first dibs as I'm sure any other group doesn't. But it just would have been helpful for me to know what other groups were, just so we don't overuse the businesses, just so we look a little more coordinated in our efforts to raise funds for all these good causes that we have, that having some sort of more coordinated fundraising would be very helpful, not only for the foundation, but I think just a reflection on the school district with the business owners. So I do appreciate being included in that meeting. I did just want to publicly state what you've already reiterated, that we are not in the position to be able to profit share or even join forces right now since we are doing off the ground with Relay for Life. But I do very much appreciate the effort that's being made to try to coordinate the fundraising for the district and I do think that will, that will be a good reflection overall for the district if we're able to streamline that a little more.
Do we have somebody that's a point person that is going to say, okay, we have 23 organizations that are doing fundraising for the district. Do we have somebody that's looking at that?
I am. That's part of what I am doing. Yes.
When will that be ready?
I don't know.
We're going to find that in the other house if we don't have...
I would hope that by the end of September, that I should be able to have a better handle on the whole thing. That'll give me time to dig through.
Is that many?
There's a lot of fundraising that takes place. Yes.
You could probably even go back through your old agendas and look at the back page of the things that we're approving and just start putting the list together.
So there's probably a lot of, let's see, effort with that, that is kind of just described too.
Got it. Okay. Steve Miller?
Yes, Steve Miller, Bridge Drive, Amity Township. I just wanted to comment on the budget conversation about it. Starting off and trying to stay away from the doom and gloom budget, you know, the negative publicity out there. It'd be greatly appreciated. I think that's actually contributing to some of the problems we have as far as image wise and keep looking to scatter away from the district. So anything that you'd do that, that's great appreciation.
Thank you. But understand that a lot of the gloom and doom in the coming years is going to come from the state level.
Understood.
Because if you're following what's going on in the legislature right now, they're just avoiding dealing with any issue.
Understood. I've seen the past, it wasn't really necessary. We have the image out there and it's dissolved, but it's still out there in the press. Again, it's been a lot of programs and side shows.
Thank you.
Amy Denver, Houston Drive, Douglasville. Apologize if that would break your air band over anyway. On behalf of the PTC, I do appreciate the efforts being made fundraising streamlining. We just look to coordinate calendars. We don't want to hit the parents for the same thing on the same weekend. That's all we want to do. We don't want to share fundraising. We don't want to take money away from any other worthy organization that's fundraising. God knows, I can't throw a stone down somebody in their life that's been affected by cancer. However, we just don't want to hit the same pool of resources, give out BS to fundraisers who are the same thing on the same weekend. So just coordinating fundraisers, calendars would be very helpful. That way we're not going, oh, well, parents are going on Friday, do I go to the PTC Vassar Raffle or on Sunday, do I go to Relay for Life Vassar Raffle? We did have a, I'm sure we know, so they sure won't be on the same weekend. But if we just do that thing here, these are fundraisers, then we just won't hit the parents the same weekend and then they won't have to pick which one they go to because we'll be on two separate dates. That's all I can say on behalf of the PTC. Thank you.
One idea that you could, you know, individually from what Mrs. Torshia would be doing, to reach out to the sports boosters, music boosters.
We have sports boosters.
Because I know from the music side, they've already picked what fundraising they're going to do to support their budget of what they want to accomplish. So they already have started to pick some of those dates already. I'm sure the sports have as well.
And we've started that. I've started coordinating a calendar and Scott Matts is getting that onto the website so that each of the groups knows when the other one is raising funds. And that was something that was just talked about tonight for music because I know that there was a date and I said, let's check the calendar before you pick that date because I know there's some other things going on as well. So, and, you know, we're running out of weekends. You run out of, you know, times.
Mrs. Torshia, is there a master scheduler? Who is that for?
A master scheduler of the fun...
For the calendar that you're talking about?
This is the first calendar that's being created, so I would have to say I would be the master scheduler of it at this point. And I'm going to end up delegating it to my IT department as the dates come in so that they can all be there. I've been, like I said, I've been meeting with the different groups and trying to get their calendars and get their dates and, you know, approval early is important so that I have them and that we're set.
Since we're going to add this schedule, it sounds like, can IT run up on the website? If everybody will...
He's in the process of doing that. Yeah, it was under construction right now, so it wasn't there when I went to look for it tonight during my sports or my music boosters meeting.
The rolling advanced candy for the week.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure that there's flying dates that everybody wants, right?
Yes.
For whatever fundraising there is, there's got to be key dates that everybody's kind of shooting for. So how do you, how do you, it's priority and it's, you know, what the rules.
Yeah. I don't have an answer for you tonight. I would like to get back to you with that answer.
I'm just asking to record the question.
What if two groups want to do a breakfast with Sam on Saturday before Christmas? Who gets to do it?
Yeah. I think that that's something I'm going to have to get out to the groups and saying, look, you're going to need, here's the deadline. Sooner you get me your dates, you know, first come, first served, you know, type of thing. You know, look at it that way possibly. I'm not...
I think you're going to have a hard, I mean...
Right. I'm not there yet.
This is one of the complaints we heard when it came to the reservation of the fields at the middle school. There was an organization that would come in in, you know, October of, you know, year one and they would reserve all the fields for every single day for the coming summer, the following year. So they'd find out when's the earliest date we could submit our applications to reserve the field. And they would go into the township and they would reserve every single field for every single weekend for the entire summer. So it was first come, first served basis and they were in there.
Is that something we're going to look at in the policy committee? Maybe limiting how much, how many fundraisers?
Something that we certainly could review.
And then that would prioritize their cost.
And honestly, maybe it's something that we coordinate with Revenue Enhancement. I mean, if you've got 10 groups and they're all looking for the same date, maybe just start charging. If it's not a school, necessarily a school function. I don't know.
It's not a bad idea.
Because...
That would be the place to start, I think.
Let's face it, I'm sure it's increased with our constant support. I mean, I get, my kids have so many fundraisers, all the sporting activities. I can't, I can't shake a stick with that.
So, can we move on? Another agenda?
Any other public comments or questions or presentations? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second. You in the voting meeting now?
Yeah. Want to take a break or just go right into it?
I want to give people a couple of minutes to debate.